All right, everybody, we've got a we've got a special call meeting tonight. We've got a few things primarily, we're going to take a look at the financials and the audit, is my understanding. So, we will jump right into things. A special call meeting Monday, the April 18th, 2022. I do know that there's one person who signed up, so Ms. Shadoen, you are welcome to speak.
Right now.
Yes, ma'am?
Okay.
Well, a lot of times you don't have the pleasure on special call meetings. We just jump right into business.
It is on, yes. I want to give a special thank you to Chad Sailors and Brian Collins. I got it. They were over working on our street on a drainage issue, on a creek issue, and I kind of pigeonholed them and brought them down to my house, and I started asking them, because I thought about putting in curbs and gutters. And they gave me, they spent a good 30 minutes explaining situations and my best options and about the curb and gutter program that the city has, which I knew nothing about. And I'm sure a lot of people don't know about it, but they were fantastic. And Brian, to answer your question about why the fence is two foot inside the alley, 40 years ago, we got special permission from the city to do that because at the end of that fence line was an 80-year-old white mulberry. Matter of fact, it was the only white mulberry in town that was still living. So, that fence line, that tree sat right on our property line, so they gave permission for it to be moved into the alley for two foot. And they were fantastic, great information, very positive, and I really appreciate it. Brian, I'm waiting on that email, please. See? Now, I thought I forgot, but listen to you. Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot, Sherri. Guys, good work. Okay, jump right into the business tonight. Under item number one, discussion of possible actions regarding approval of the City of McGregor annual comprehensive financial audit report for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2021, as prepared by Brooks Watson and Company, PLLC.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Louis Prelove. I'm senior audit manager with Brooks Watson, and I had the pleasure of working with the city to complete the fiscal year ending 2021 audit. In front of you, you should have a bound copy of the annual report. Inside that front cover are three items. One included a PowerPoint that'll be on screen as well, as well as two letters that accompany the report. I will be using that PowerPoint to go over the results of the audit. All right. First, I would like to give just a quick overview of the audit process to give you a little bit of information of what we're doing during that audit process. So, one, we conduct the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, and we break the audit down into what we kind of consider five phases. So, phase one is the assessment phase. During that time, we are coming in and evaluating each process within the city where anywhere where money's coming in and going out, we're evaluating the controls that are in those places, looking at the documented procedures, as well as sitting down with individuals in each of those departments and making sure we have a good understanding of day-to-day procedures and how those work. While we're doing that, we're looking for the controls that are in place, looking for any room for improvement, any areas of risk that we may want to consider. And then we also sample test each of those areas to ensure that what we're looking at from the support side matches with the procedures that are supposed to be in place. Next, we move into our risk-based approach. What that is, is we evaluate each part of the financial statements to ensure that we have a good understanding or consider the risk aspect of those financials, and that drives the type of testing we're going to do, to what detail and level we're going to perform, and the type of procedure we are going to perform to ensure that we gain the most materially accurate numbers we can for the audit. Next is the compliant testing. So, that's going to be things like the Public Fund Investment Act, grants that the city may be involved in, bid requirements, things of that nature, anything that we see where the city would want to, we wanted to ensure that the city is in compliance, we're going to evaluate those and do some sample testings over those as well to ensure the city is meeting those requirements. Next is the field work phase. So, that's going to be year-end procedures where we come in a couple months after year end to ensure that the numbers are accurate. So, we're going to do cutoff testing, we're going to be tying out the balance sheet wherever possible, we're going to be using third-party support to ensure that they agree from that end as well. And as we're tying out that balance sheet, we're going to test the material accuracy of your expenditures and your revenues. Moving on to that conclusion phase, once we've completed all the testing procedures, goes through multiple layers of review to ensure that the procedures that were performed are complete and appropriate, and then we prepare the two letters and the report that we have for you this evening. Next, this is to give you an overview of the components within the report. So, within this report, you have your introductory section, that's going to include the transmittal letter and some information regarding the city. Behind that's your financial section, that's going to have your auditor's opinion, the management's discussion and analysis, that's going to give you some detailed information over year-over-year comparison and some dialogue as it relates to the budget and things of that nature. Behind that's your financial statements, that's going to be both your full accrual statements as well as your fund-level statements. Behind that's your notes to the financial statements, which is going to give you detail as it relates to those statements and what makes up those numbers in the financial statements. Behind that's your supplementary information, that's going to be things like your budget to actual pension disclosures and things of that nature, followed by your statistical section. As it relates to the auditor's opinion, the city did receive an unmodified opinion, and that's the highest level of assurance that we are able to provide as auditors, often referred to as a clean opinion. So, audit was in excellent shape. Also, the city did receive the certificate of achievement in financial reporting for the previous year's audit, and we fully expect the city to receive it again for the 2021 Next, this is going to give you a quick overview of the general funds, revenues and expenditures for the year. Overall, city was in line with what we expected. Property taxes was up slightly due to assessment increases for the year. Sales tax was up due to this more purchasing in the area and local growth. Franchise was down just slightly. Land and leases, that was down due to the C-3 moving out during the year. And then charges for services was up, that's due primarily to permits that were up during the year. On the expenditure side, things look consistent year-over-year, and we're in line with the budget, which you'll see on a future slide. Next, the general fund balance. So, first, the GFOA recommends that governments maintain a minimum unrestricted budgetary fund balance in the general fund of no less than two months. Regular general fund operating expenditures, 60 days or 16%. And what that means is if you were to, assuming the city were to have maintained pretty consistent expenses year-over-year, and going into that next year, how long would you be able to operate without receiving any more funds? So, GFOA, they say minimum 16%. That's really low. We generally recommend higher than that, but the city last year was at 53%, and this year's at 73%. So, city's in good shape and looks good as far as that's concerned. The second bullet point there, related to the budget results for the year. So, overall, the budget resulted in a net positive budget variance of $692,000. Summarized breakdown of that, your revenues were just under budget, received a little bit less than budget by $26,000. Your expenses were under budget by $680,000. Other sources, you had a positive variance there of $39,000. So, net variance for the year had a positive $692,000. So, assuming the city was able to accomplish everything you were seeking to accomplish for the year, it's a sign of a very healthy fiscal year budget. Next, this is looking at your, the revenues, expenses, and changes in fund net position for your utility funds. This is a summarized look at what that was for the year. The primary thing that we look at here from audit perspective is it operates more like a business where your governmental funds are not-for-profit, right? So, here, we want to make sure that the fund is self-sustaining. So, we look at that key point of the operating income. So, it did have an operating income of $885,000. So, this fund is self-sustaining and in good shape. So, no concerns there.
Wait, hang on. Can you go back just for a second there? So, going through some of those other figures there.
Yes, sir.
Like non-operating revenues, expenses, I see a negative, what is that?
So, that's generally going to contain your interest expenses is going to be in there. Other miscellaneous things that are considered non-operating, so not your key aspects of your report, of your funds activity. And then if you want to look at a more detailed breakdown of that, it's in that report, that bound copy of the report.
All right.
And it's on page 34, 35.
In that expense, is that the debt payments associated with the water and sewer fund?
No, so those would not be debt payments, because those are going to, on the business-type side, those are going to be treated more, the debt payment is on the balance sheet, or the debt balances rather on the balance sheet. So, as that's being paid down, you're not going to see the expense associated with that on the expense side. That's just going to draw down that balance on your balance sheet. So, the only part of the payment you're going to see on the revenue side, revenue expense side, is going to be your interest portion, which is going to be within that non-operating piece of your statements. So, other items within that non-operating piece, investment income, so very little there, but interest rates, you know how that goes. Small amount, received insurance proceeds, there was a loss on disposal of some property during the year, a small amount. Bonds were issued during the year, so bond issuance costs related to that, that goes in that category as well. And then interest expenses going there.
Yeah, I see it all. Okay, yeah, good, thanks. Thanks for the citation there. All right.
Any other questions on that one, sir?
No.
Okay. Moving right along, looking at the EDC. So, just kind of the key points for this one is just kind of comparing cash year-over-year was up $55,000 compared to the previous year, and your fund balance was up $72,000. Concerning the budget, it had a positive budget variance of $111,000 for the year. So, revenues were positive at $48,000, and your expenses were under budget by $63,000. So, EDC, assuming that they were able to accomplish everything, seeking to accomplish for the year, it's a healthy budget, in line with what was budgeted. Next, this is related to the communication letters that accompany the report. So, the two other letters that are, the two letters that were inside that front cover of your report, the first is your communication with those charged with governance. So, this is going to give you a breakdown and information as it relates to our responsibility as the auditor, management's responsibility, and then point out a few key factors that we would like to communicate and are required to communicate to you all. One, audit was conducted in compliance with all ethics requirements regarding independence. We encountered no difficulties when working with management, and audit adjustments were identified and corrected by management. The second, and that also is going to include the attachment, which gives you information as it relates to the journal entries that we did make. The second letter is a communication regarding internal controls. With this one, we identified recommendations in internal controls, and those were reviewed by management. None were considered to be material weaknesses. There were a couple of recommendations, and then a couple of items that are more FYI for upcoming GASB announcements and things going on. As it relates to GASB 87, there's going to be a change in the way operating leases are reported this coming year, and so we'll be working with the city to ensure that those are looked at and are reported properly next year, as well as information related to American Rescue Plan Act, and just really making sure that the city's aware of the things to consider as it relates to handling the utilization of those funds. But with that open up to any questions you may have. I do want to say Carolyn and the team here, they do a great job. She works really hard to make sure that we get everything we need as it relates to the audit, and she reaches out prior to the audit to ensure we're getting everything we need. And so, we could not ask for more responsiveness and timeliness and organization as it relates to the reporting. So, just really appreciate the, all the work from the city and all those who pull files and, you know, a lot of legwork that goes into getting us everything we request from the audit, so.
Where is the page, sir, that has the debt listed in it?
In the, in the bound report?
Yeah, I always like to see that, because it always provides a good summary.
Sure. So, in the notes section of the report, it's going to be page 50, 60, page 60 is the first page related to the breakdown of the debt. So, that gives you that breakdown on the governmental aspect, as well as the business-type portion, and then the following pages gives you a more detailed breakdown on the balance.
Yeah, that's the one I was looking for. I'll just tell you, over the years, it's been handy to have page like 61, where you can always see what the city's outstanding debt is.
Yeah, and page 60 is handy in giving you information on kind of the flow of the debt from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. We break out a column to show you any portion that is refunded, because you guys did refund some debt during the fiscal year, so in the enterprise fund there. So, it's always good to kind of see the flow from beginning of the year to the end of
Another question I saw up there a little while ago, under the water and wastewater, there was a reference to a fund transfer, and then I see it looks like maybe the backup to that on page 65. And this may be a question more for Carolyn, I don't know, but help us understand the transfer of revenue within the water wastewater fund, and I guess I'm looking at page 65 as the backup to it.
So, that's primarily going to be as it relates to debt payments. So, a lot of that is split between those funds. And I know going into next year, you guys are consolidating, I believe you are consolidating those two funds, so that will kind of just most, more or less disappear, because a lot of the information is either capital-related for capital purchases or debt payment-related. And so, as those funds are being paid out, they're being transferred from one to the Just one of the other reasons why putting those two together is going to be helpful, That chart is a little confusing, but it helps give you kind of like a diagram of which ones are coming in, which ones are going out. But then on the financial statements themselves, there is a breakdown line item that shows you as well.
Anyway, I'd encourage the council to spend some time and really, there's just a lot of always really good information, the appendices, especially in the back, you know, everything from the employees in every department, biggest taxpayers, you know, for industry, just a lot of really good information in here, a lot of demographic information.
I have a question about the, on slide five, on expenditures. So, it says that we were, we were down in expenditures. I was just wondering, was there a project or maybe something that we didn't do with those funds, or we just didn't, it just seems like a big amount to me that we wouldn't have spent if we had it in the budget.
It is a larger amount. Please keep it on.
What I will say, while she's getting ready to address it as well, the, if you look on page 81, it gives you more of a breakdown of, because that is like a lump sum number, so it looks like, well, hey, why, what did we not spend?
Yeah.
So, there's, I mean, which, you know, a lot of times, it's timing is a big factor a lot of times, because you may budget for something, and especially right now with the way that this year has worked, the supplies being so low, a lot of times, you may have planned to buy whatever it was, and you're having to wait, and so you can't spend it yet. So, that's a big part of it, but that 81 gives you a good breakdown.
I was just going to say, keep in mind, in general fund, there's 12 different departments, so that was a combination of all 12 departments. So, some of it could have been employees that left and we hadn't replaced yet, you know, there's a lot of different aspects to it.
We also adjusted for loss of revenue on C-3.
We adjusted a lot of other expenses.
Yeah, we weren't sure where things were going, so.
Cut costs. Kevin, do we have, you know, a lot of times, I don't know if it's this meeting or another one, we talk about carrying forward the same auditors. So, sir, how long has Brooks Watson been with us?
This is our third year.
Third year?
Yes, sir.
Spent about every five years.
Try about every five years.
Okay, all right. I would just ask that next year, if we can, if we can get this, I don't know, sometime prior to the meeting?
Sure.
So, we can have a chance to look at it and get warmed up to it a little bit before the meeting.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, a few delays this year, apologize for that. But I do want to let you know, we're available throughout the year, so if, I know this is some light reading, so if, you know, if while you're at home, you're perusing through it, if you have, please don't hesitate to reach out to me, my contact information is there. Carolyn can, is more than able to answer those questions as well, but I do want you to know that I'm available and happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, counsel, are any other questions about the audit? We do have an action item, this is something that we must approve each year of the audit. Is there a motion under item one?
I make a motion to approve the City of McGregor annual comprehensive financial audit report.
Is the motion a second under item one? Are you other questions or comments? Hearing none, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries.
Thank you all.
Carolyn, relatedly, item two, received financials as of February 28th, 2022.
Okay, Mayor, counsel, February actually represents 41.67% of our fiscal year, and if you'll note, all of our revenues exceed that, with the exception of the utility fund, and it's right there at it. Our expenses are well below, other than exchange, and they're right there at it as well. Nothing to raise any red flags. Okay, our net change in funds, you'll see that our operating accounts are up $1,800, our debt service is up $300, our capital projects are down $1,404,000, and our grants are up $660,000.
More to the grants, is that that grant word?
That's the R, grant, that's it. That's the only one right now.
We're going to be figuring out where to spend it, right?
Yes. So, for a net of $1.5 million, so it's, our net cash in bank is $1.5 million more than last year. We've already gone through all that. First, our general fund net cash is 87.1,000 higher than the previous year. The revenues are up 90.4, and expenditures are up 3.3 as compared to February of last year. The revenue increases mainly due to our delinquent MNO taxes collected are up $40,500. Permits are $12,000 higher, sale of assets is $59,400, and then our lease revenue is down 37.7, which is pretty good considering we don't, didn't have C-3 for this year.
So, what are we, right at a year now without C-3, March to March?
Yes, March to March. March was the last, is when they paid. Our utility fund net cash is up $99,200, revenues are up 4, expenses are down 95. Personnel services are up 79.9, supplies are down 24.3, our other is down 8,400, debt service is up 14,600, and capital outlay is down 157.8. And then at our municipal airport, the net cash flows are up 14,200, as revenues are down 3,600, and expenses are down 17,800, and we still have only spent $19,900 in our special project costs. Our total sales tax is higher than it's ever been in March for the last 10 years, it was $594,700 and whatever that is.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, thank you. I could say it was a three or five, $734, so that's, still doing good, it's going strong
Anybody have any questions about the financials? Okay, Carolyn, thanks for the report. It takes us to item three, discussion of possible actions regarding approval of the purchase of a new fire engine for the City of McGregor.
Counsel, while they make their way to the microphone, one of the things that you really should do is try to get a replacement schedule and/or capital schedule on your fire department for trucks. When I came here, everything was pretty well wore out. They were talking about building another truck, some of them were talking about not building a truck, but buying a truck from a company, and you ended up with, it's unit one now, right? The pumper, isn't that the number one pumper?
Yeah, engine one.
Then, engine one. It's time to look at retiring a couple of old trucks that I'm not sure could start anyway, at least one of them, and buying another one. However, since the last time we bought a truck, prices have gone up considerably, but I'll let the folks tell you how we're going to work that. Andrew?
So, we currently, the fire department actually looked at Mr. Evans' direction at what was needed for current situation, plus the growth that McGregor's experiencing. We don't have really a need for a ladder, we don't really have anything tall. So, after discussion amongst the officers within the fire department and the look at the growth and what current needs are, we're asking the council to consider another engine, which is another pumper. It's very similar, just more modern. It's a very similar, just more modern updated version of Engine One that was purchased back in two thousand fourteen. This unit would kind of basically have the same functionality, but it provides us with double the capacity of what we currently have. Just to kind of review real quick, the fire district is actually bigger than the City of McGregor. We cover a hundred and ten square miles because we also cover part of the county for fire protection. And the engine that we're looking at would increase our capacity. We unfortunately had a house on Wildflower go to the ground, even though we put over twenty-five thousand gallons of water on it. With having two engines of this capacity, there is a probability that it could have saved part of it. It's difficult to, to say, you know, in hindsight. But with the growth that's coming, we certainly would need the capacity for the city's ISO rating, which ultimately would hopefully help all the taxpayers with their, their homeowner's insurance. The better the rating is, the, the better that's taken into account for homeowner's insurance.
What's our rate rating now, our ISO rating?
Five. We're a five.
We're, we're about to go through a reassessment process on that again.
So, I mean, are you asking us for money tonight? Because I'd like to know pictures and what we're being asked to, how much and how we're gonna pay for it.
You should stay.
How we, I, talking with Mr. Sabonis, there's gonna be several different options for us to finance it. The return or when we receive this is like twenty-two to twenty-four months out. So we'll have paid off the current fire truck. So we're trying to just make the payments be as close to what we're currently paying as we can. So we're hoping we can still do a ten-year, just depends on interest rates and some other factors. But Jim has said that they will work with us and get, get us several options. I should have them tomorrow. So what we'll have, but we don't have to finance until we take possession, which is in two years. So it's two years down the road before we'll work it up and have it ready to go. But we won't actually go out to give bids or anything for two years. But the prices go up on April the twenty-ninth. That's why we're bringing it now, because it's high now and it's gonna go up seven percent more on the twenty-ninth, the fire truck. Sidens Martin told us that we, this quote that we have here is only good until April the twenty-ninth. But if we place the order before, by the twenty-ninth or before, then it's gonna take them two years to build it. Then we'll pay for it.
So you don't pay for it until it arrives?
Correct.
That's a two-year period, but you lock in the price now?
Yes.
That wasn't the idea. Originally, we thought we had till the end of May, until today. And somehow that got misunderstood. However, it is what it is. And that's just why we decided to go ahead and put it up to you now. You can wait and it's gonna cost you more money and that's gonna be universal with all the companies. That's just the situation that we're facing right now. You still don't have to pay for it. You still have opportunity to finance it. You can finance it now and take the money down and bank it and have it ready and have arbitrage earnings and the whole nine yards. But the point is that your payment be pushed to match when the payoff is for the other one. So you've got, you've got Jim Sabonis to do what Jim Sabonis does so well. But you won't really know what that's gonna function like until May maybe. Is there the opportunity to cancel the order if they decide to? Just asking for a friend.
I don't know the hundred percent, I can't say a hundred percent what the, the cancellation policy is. I'm sure it's possible. These trucks are all handmade to our specifications in Wisconsin. They take exactly the layout that we provide for them for what our needs are and they're hand-built to those specs. Oh, it's in here, it's in the paperwork that Carolyn had. So in the event of the proposal is accepted and a purchase order is issued, then cancellation or termination by the customer before completion, Sidens Martin Emergency Group may charge a cancellation fee. The following charge schedule is based on costs incurred may be applied. Ten percent of the purchase price after the order is accepted and entered into manufacturer number, or letter B is twenty percent of the purchase price after completion of the approval drawings and thirty percent of the purchase price upon any material requisition.
That's pretty punitive.
Yeah.
How much does it cost?
Yeah, back to one of our basic questions, how much?
Eight hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-one cents.
And how much was the last? Eight years ago?
Four hundred and seventy-two thousand.
How much?
Four seventy-two.
Eight years ago is four seventy-two and now it's eight hundred and what?
Eight eighteen, eight fifteen, sorry.
And we're talking about the same truck? It's just?
Same exact truck, same equipment that we had before. The equipment went up twenty-five hundred?
Yeah.
It's all but the truck.
Did you say more water capacity?
No, it'll be equivalent, it's a thousand gallon.
To what you have now? It'll be equivalent to what you have now?
Yes. But in the event of a structure fire, having two of them, you're, you're two thousand gallons of water right then on the spot.
So how long are we financing the one we're paying for now?
We financed it for ten years.
And how long are we gonna finance this next one?
Hopefully ten years. I mean, we, we may have to go out between ten and fifteen, just depending on what the payment's coming.
Yeah, I'm sitting here thinking, if it's twice as much?
Yeah, but we don't wanna do twenty years.
Well, your interest rate is less, I think, considerably.
Yes, it's, this is the one we have now is higher than what we got the last bond issue. Now it has gone up, but Jim thinks it's going to level back down. And so we're gonna, if approval, watch that as well to see if it goes back into the twos.
So what, what, what's the interest rate we're paying on the one we currently are paying?
It's three point seven, three point seven oh five, I believe.
And we're hoping to get this one in the twos?
I would like that very much, I mean.
Well, I'm just thinking the math doesn't work if we're gonna make, if we're gonna keep the payment.
You're right, you're right, we know that, yeah.
Well, you're gonna, you know, you're probably looking at a fifteen-year note. You'll be tight, you'll be pretty close, but it's, you know, average life of the truck is over fifteen years.
Somebody asked the, the question, if we, if counsel were to say yes today, we get this ordered? And let's say there is a grant that might help us pay three thou, three hundred thousand, can we still use that to help us pay for this? Or, you know, or, or at this point, is it no, because counsel's already approved it? We cannot do that?
That would probably depend on the grant itself, but I would think that, yeah, we should be able to apply it.
Because, you know, sometimes the grants, they're like, as long as you've got a plan and if we're not really paying for it until two years from now? I mean.
And see, and if we do it the way Jim's talking, we won't even be going out for, for that debt for two years. So if we can get a grant in the next two years, it will be before we actually seek funding.
And if we don't do this now, you're telling us it's a seven percent increase?
That's what they're telling us.
Well, that doesn't seem right. Yeah.
But we face that with even the vehicles, with the generator, I mean, just pretty much everything is, you've got so many days or, you know, at this date, it's going, you know, they're all announcing and price increases because their costs have gone up.
Kind of like police cars, huh, James?
Mayor?
Yes.
Also, Unit One, the, the. Unit One, the one we have right now, wasn't actually a new truck. It was a demo. It was two years old when we purchased it, okay? And I think we got around a twenty percent discount at that time. So you're looking at probably around a six hundred thousand dollar truck. If we'd have bought it brand new, this one's brand new and everything. The two trucks we have right now, the other two reserve pumpers, one is thirty-three years old and one's thirty-nine years old. So they're, we have, they're pretty, coming on on age right now.
So then, will we keep those two that you just described?
Yes, sir.
Or sell them?
By ISO ratings, the state can continue our five-nine that we have right now. We actually have a five point zero nine right now. We're just really close to getting a four. And I think with a new truck, plus some water improvements, we'll probably get a four when we do a, a new.
The better you are, the lower you are?
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm. Especially with industrial and stuff like that. Ferguson, places like, they will be, you know, that'll, that'll help them a thou, one percent on their total insurance is a lot of money. But basically, what I'm trying to say is, by ISO, we have to have two pumpers and two reserves. Right now, we have two reserves and one pumper. We sold the old unit that we had, it was a seventy-two. We sold it this year. So that's kind of where we're at on that.
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two. And the other one's eighty-eight and eighty-four. The green truck is an eighty-four, the duplex is eighty-four. And the other, the Smell, is a set eighty-nine.
Didn't somebody give us the green one also?
Yeah, mm-hmm. Those come from Hercules.
That was left, it's a Department of the Navy.
In, in the eight fifteen, that is fully loaded, everything that you guys would need?
That's ready to roll.
No, no, you won't need any other equipment for it? I mean, that's everything that you guys would need?
The truck with the equipment, yeah.
The only equipment that's not included in that price is the actual tools. The public generally refers to them as the jaws of life. We call them a spreader, a cutter and a ram. Those tools are, they're about ten grand apiece. The department paid for a combi tool that's a spreader and a cutter itself last year and we put that on rescue. But the seventy-sixth, or the loose equipment, seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty cents, that includes hoses, nozzles, axes, halogen bars, the ladders that go on it for rooftop operations, it, it's ready to roll. We also made sure that it would fit. So we put a height requirement of what they could put on it.
And so when we're talking about what this would look like in our budget, it wouldn't look like anything for two years.
Correct.
And then when it did show up in the budget, it would show up as long-term debt?
And, and basically with the same payment that we're currently making is what we're, that's our goal. That's what we're working towards. So it's just gonna be a continuation of what you see every year. It's like it just kept on going, but it's a different truck.
But this is not rolled into some other existing bond?
No, no.
And neither is the one we're paying for now?
No, it's a separate note all on its own.
Do we pay those notes directly through the fire truck company? Or where's the, where do you literally go borrow the money from?
It was actually, they put us in touch last year, or last year, five years ago? No, eight years ago?
Twenty-fourteen.
With an agency that did it and then they sold the note to P and C Bank. And so now we pay P and C Bank.
Kevin, what do you think? I just, I'm not, just wish we'd known about it a little earlier, that's all.
Well, you can know about it earlier and we can wait. But it cost us seven percent. We didn't know that until recently. We thought it was in May, now it's in April. And that's the way it is. With Jim Sabonis chopping it for us, you have your debt capacity there. You'll have to roll off, probably have to extend it. As Van said, it's a, the other one was a demo. This will be a brand-new truck. But I wanna say the service life of these things runs around twenty years.
Fifteen, fifteen to twenty.
I've seen twenty-year notes on fire trucks or dead on fire trucks pretty often.
Fifteen being a busy municipality. That's running the truck every shift, twenty-four hours a day, three sixty-five. For us, I, Engine Twelve is a nineteen eighty-four. We still use it, still pumps.
What about the one we have right now? How often do we, how often do we get it out, the one pumper we have? What do you guess, Van, it goes out, how often?
Probably.
Three, four times a week maybe?
Week, something like that, yeah, yeah. Usually the car wrecks or something like that.
Well, it seems like it's probably the thing to do. I don't know if we have much of an alternative. I mean, waiting a month doesn't do any good. Be right back to where we are and just spend. Seven percent of eight hundred thousand is another fifty-something thousand dollars. So that's, doesn't make any financial sense.
It's a long-term investment. You have the capability financially to make now. In the past, you've not made those purchases in a timely manner and you weren't capable financially in a timely manner. In my opinion, those things come together and you should go ahead and take the action so that you build the department for the future. And your future's gonna have a lot of industry out there in that industrial park and quite a few more people based on the housing stats that are looking at us right now. So I think you make the investment and I can tell you one thing's pretty sure, they're not gonna go down in price.
And we can get that ISO rating down, that's wonderful for everybody.
Yeah, quite a bit.
I mean.
When you start talking about total, total dollars across the whole city, yeah, talking about a lot of money.
Okay. So does that affect homeowner's insurance also?
Yes.
Yes.
Sure does.
How long has Waco been working to get their one?
Several years, several years.
The City of Waco's fire department actually got their ISO rating down to one. It's very difficult to achieve. Typically, you'll only see a one in a, in a fairly large municipal department that's really on top of their game. Honestly, us being close to a four is, that's a big deal for a town our size. It's a big deal.
You know, Kevin, we talk about the industrial park and I know we have a capital fund and we set money aside. I wonder if we could do the same, or at least internally or even externally, by going to those companies unapproached on a kind of basis? Because, well, we're protecting a lot of asset and a lot of territory out there. Sure seemed to make sense to have something set aside or generated off of the businesses and what we're gonna be providing for them out there.
Something we can pursue. The protection at SpaceX, you're basically looking at grass fires and some of the structures. You're not gonna get near any of the really big stuff. In fact, their, their plan there is to let it go and just stay away for a while. Anything large or consequential, you're still gonna be calling Waco for the backup and they're certainly gonna come for you. For instance, we don't have anything tall as a general rule, but we do have a couple of structures that we could use a ladder on if we needed to. They're not really consequential structures. They're not like they're a building that houses people. However, if you need a ladder truck or snorkel, Woodway will bring you one, so will Waco. When we had the house fire where Tom Kirk lives now, they knocked the chimney down with a ladder truck from, I started to say Waco, it was actually from Woodway. They brought it down.
Hewitt purchased a ladder two years ago.
You have backup till you get to the place that you can afford that. And with what's going on in industrial park, you will be able to afford that in the future and you will have to have it, all of the above. So approaching those folks from a standpoint is not a bad idea at all to accelerate some of that. Something to think about.
If a grass fire got a way out there, man, that's a.
They took care of that pretty well with their new, what do you call that military truck we got?
It's an LMTV. We received our latest brush truck, we named it. We received our latest brush truck. We named it Brush One. It's a surplus military vehicle. It's a five-ton, um, general-purpose military truck from the Forest Service. We received a grant for a skid unit. We put a thousand-gallon skid unit on it. We probably have four thousand dollars of, of investment from the department side invested in, in getting it all done. We did our official push-in ceremony Friday. It's actually fully operational and ready to roll right in time for brush season. So instead of having three brush vehicles, we now have four.
Okay, is there a motion on three, then we can talk about it somewhere from you two?
I'm going to make a motion again. What did I do? Get it, get it started. For the divided. Our truck.
I second.
There's a motion to second under item three, which is the approval of purchasing a new fire. Is there any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
That takes us to four. Discussion and possible action regarding approval of resolution R-five twenty-two. A resolution of the City Council of the City of McGregor, Texas declaring the necessity for acquiring property for the purpose of constructing a railroad spur line and related facilities from BNSF rail facilities into the city of McGregor to be used for transportation purposes, providing railroad loading and unloading access for the citizens of the city of McGregor and providing industrial and other access to railroad transportation from the former Naval Weapons Reserve Industrial Facility, now known as the McGregor Industrial Park, authorizing the city manager of the city of McGregor to make a bona fide offer and authorizing proceedings in eminent domain to acquire the property.
Counsel, as you know, we're going to have to build a spur into the industrial park. It will serve the entire industrial park. First, it'll have to serve Canoff Industries. It has to be approved by BNSF. It's been pre-engineered and laid out, and this is the eleven point five-four acres it would take from the property across three seventeen. Basically, from our sewer plant belongs to Barbie Holdings, ranch operation out of, oh my goodness, Quero?
Quero?
Yeah, I think Quero. Good folks, but this gets the process started on the conversation. We've had it appraised. They've given us permission to go on land and appraise it. And BNSF has approved the layout and, as has Canoff and how it functions with them. There are people in discussions with us about the other side of that rail in the industrial park that we can't talk about at this point. But having rail in the industrial park is going to be a very sought-after thing. Questions, that's all I can think of. The process starts with, we'll be sending a letter, an offer letter based on the appraisal. I'm sure they won't accept it, and then we go through the entire condemnation process, which ends with a special committee or commission appointed to award. And then once that's done, we can take possession, and then if they want to appeal the amount awarded, we can go through that process as well.
So we've been knowing this is going to be coming down the pipe for a long time now.
Ever since we committed to Canoff, yes, sir. But you've always known you're going to have to have it back in the industrial park. Our original thought was we'd go back across right at Ferguson where it was before. But the geometry of that crossing no longer works for the trains of today. It works okay coming from the north, but it does not work okay coming from the south. And if you go out to that old crossing, you'll see where the tracks from the south have been taken up. It only comes off from one direction now.
You're talking about at the old spur coming off the main line?
Yes, sir. It only, the track, there's only tracks there for one side now. Because the geometry of that south side was too tight for, quote, railcars of today. So this location was looked at with BNSF for two years. And in fact, got moved a couple of times by BNSF so that it would work with their existing operations.
Yeah, I know we've kind of batted that back and forth, so this is the spot, Dan, right?
This is the spot. This is the only spot. It makes it a little difficult to work with after we get to Canoff. However, it is capable of serving the entire park once we extend it from there. That'll all be based on what development comes. On the mega site side of Judith rather than the mega park side of Judith, which is where Canoff is.
And so it looks like we're cutting through, what, sixty-something acres, and we need eleven of it to make both sides work?
Correct. It's interesting in that it works for the property owner. Of course, he'll argue differently. But if you look to the south side of the rail, that's all pretty much a flooded area and an old quarry pit until it gets right up on top of the hill, which is where the old waste management site was. The old facility up there on the hill. However, the stuff on the north side is nice, developable land. And could work for a couple of things. It's, it's zoned R-ten now, I think. Because I think we brought it in a couple of years ago to the city limits. But he could certainly approach us from the standpoint of industrial, commercial, or just about anything. So the, the north half and the south half are completely different pieces of property. So his remainder will be pretty good Class A property.
And how do we look as far as timing at this point to, you know, when we look at the legal process to make the Canoff project kind of connect up with one another?
You're looking at two years. That's what we've got in the development agreement. And we've, I've been told, we should be able to make it within that two-year timeframe, depending on the availability of the actual rail steel and other materials is what's going to be the driver. But as far as being able to get it built, we'll be able to get it done within the two years, depending on the supply. And they are aware of that. They'll be, they'll be operational before that, but they'll be supplying themselves with trucks for a while. But we can't do it till we get started.
And this, whatever the cost is going to be, that was part of what was rolled in to the anticipated bond money, correct?
It's been surveyed. It has been also archaeologically surveyed and environmentally surveyed as well. So it's, it's, and it's already partially designed, so. Got several tracks going at one time, pun intended.
Okay, um, about resolution number under item four, is there a motion?
We approve resolution R-five twenty-two.
There's a motion to second under item four. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion carries. To item five, receive the twenty-twenty-two street program presentation.
Counsel, uh, last time we saw one of these, it was a different fellow standing there, and I miss him. But if we're going to replace it with anybody, we've got the right guy. Quite frankly, he was Paul's choice to replace himself with. So Chad has done a lot of study up on this, and our new street supervisor is standing with him. And I think you're going to enjoy what you see.
So Chad, we know you introduced your supervisor with you there tonight.
I am, I am. He kind of took me off guard with what he said. He's got very kind comments. And I want to thank the council for the opportunity to share our twenty-twenty-two street plan. I want to, well, first off, my name is Chad Sailors. For those that don't know me, I'm the director of Public Works. Brian Collins is our street supervisor. He is a twenty-year veteran wildland, wildland firefighter from the Forest Service who was equipment operator and a supervisor. He has brought his skills to the city of McGregor, where he is leading his group. And he's still an operator. He's working as an operator with the city of McGregor, where he has learned the asphalt lay-down machine, uh, which I'll let him share more on that as we go. Brian put together this PowerPoint that we're going to present, and I'm going to get out of his way and let him go. And there's a lot of bullet points that we're going to cover and answer questions as, as we go.
Good evening, counsel. For this year, for the twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two street season, first picture up there was Seventh between Lincoln and Johnson. We just recently completed that, I believe about two weeks ago. To the left picture is what it was before we got started. To the right is what it is afterwards. Added a concrete valley at the end, and, you know, it's all asphalt now, or hot mix asphalt in place now. Instead of, it was a road milling, road base, kind of almost dirt road at that point, so. Took that section. We did some upgrades to the lay-down machine in the off-season when it was colder. New controls updated, make it a lot more user-friendly, updated controls. So we did that, and this was kind of the first street where we broke it out on and put a new driving surface on for you guys, so.
So Brian, when you see that road on the right, is that considered a finished and final product?
Yes, sir. With what we have for, I believe we call it rural urban street, with, we did put in the valley with a short section of curb and gutter, but there is no existing curb and gutter on that street to go off of. So yes, that would be your finished product.
And so at that point, then, I guess you just have to maintain it with, you know, with the cracks, or you reseal it, or what?
Yes.
Spray some oil every couple of years?
Um, the parameters we've been looking at is between seven and ten years. It's pretty much industry standard, whether it's city, commercial, you know, contract, it's about seven to ten years, most streets, depending on the traffic load. We have to go back. You'd either do the chip seal road, which I'll present some of those facts, or I have a bullet point on that later down in the presentation. We go over that within a chip seal because we have the asphalt base underneath it already, that driving surface. Or we can go into what's a slurry coat or crack seal. There's multiple options of what we can go into. Considering we have, and it's in there, we have partnership with the county already. In our government agreement to do chip seal road, we could go with that. And I think that would be, we buy the materials, they do the labor. That'd probably be a very cost-effective measure at that point. But I'm extremely hopeful that seven to ten years, we don't even have to, you'll never see this street in a presentation again for, hey, I need to spend money on it. So, street department information, we've converted to building hot mix asphalt streets for all streets built by the street department crew at this point. The goal was always to come back and my predecessors and Paul was to get as much roads we could get done with the CO sixteen and do the hot mix over the top. They did as much as they could with what money they had to spread it, get as much utilities and the road surface as drivable. Now it's my job in my era to come back and we're trying to cover as much of that up to get the citizens' driving service they ask for and they need. And we got all those utilities underneath in place at this point, so. These streets will last longer, have a better driving service. Everyone, you know, I think everyone can be in agreeance with that, with hot mix. To build these streets, the ground temperature has to be fifty degrees and rising. So sometimes, I want to put that in, there's some, some folk, or citizens, and you guys may not understand why, you may not see us out there building a street in the middle of winter. It's just the ground temperature's got to be rising. If the hot mix hits that, it crusts on the bottom. And it's, it just does not compact like it's supposed to do the breakdown process. Because we actually break it down when it comes, it goes through the machine, gets laid down, and the first roll is called the breakdown because it breaks and pushes all the asphalt oils into all the rocks and everything in there, and then it creates that bond. But if it starts cooling from the bottom too quick, it doesn't do it properly. We are working diligently to get the most streets covered with a good quality hot mix asphalt service within the budget constraints. Everyone wants, I want it. I want as many streets as I can throw down, so I'm trying to spread the money as long as I can, as much as I can for the worst streets we got. We also converted to doing only hot mix asphalt patch hole repairs. We bought a trailer that is a hot mix asphalt trailer. It's pulled behind one of our pickup trucks, and we go to the same place we go get the big roads that you just saw in the picture before. We go get our hot mix that in the morning, and the trailer keeps it warm all day long. So we've gone away from using cold mix, which is always a substitute for a road repair to be repaired later down the road. Now we're doing hot mix patch repairs. I should have taken a picture, and I didn't. It's my fault. I thought about it just as I said it. But over here on Fifth Street, we had a water leak a couple of weeks ago, right next to the nail salon and the welding shop. That was our hot mix trailer. We hauled it in with that and helped, I laid it down with the lay-down machine, but we used that. The whole big patch was done with the trailer, and it probably took us four or five hours. But it was the same temperature. We got it out of the hot mix plant. It stays that temperature all the way through the whole day.
The hot mix is about a third the cost of cold mix as well.
Yes.
It's another costly.
Yeah, so we don't, we don't have that stored around anymore. We don't have any of it in stock anymore. It's, it's, no, it's double the price. It is, per ton is double the price for a cold mix versus a hot mix, so.
You just have to have a little different equipment.
Yeah, we had to take it, it was a small investment. It was a twenty thousand dollar trailer. We got it used, but a brand-new one was forty thousand. But I got it delivered for half the price of what a brand-new one would cost, and it only had three hundred hours on it. And it has been really great. It's been, it's, I want to say we probably are close to running about a hundred tons through a three-ton hopper at this point, as much patching we've been doing with it, as much as we can. So, um, and that was the chip seal. Any street that we identified to be chip sealed, we'll continue to partner with the county to have it placed down. That's been a continuation partnership we've had with the county. And that would be, Mr. Mayor, when down the road, that'd be that seven, ten-year mark or something we need to do an immediate repair on. And that we just don't have, I don't know what the best example of that would be. We would just need a road put down over there in the neighborhood, and they got, hey, we're on this side of McLean County. You got a road that we could shore up for a while? Yeah, man, come on.
Yeah, take it if you can get it, right?
Yeah, exactly, sir. So I got a four-phase plan for you guys to look at tonight. I think you guys got a handout, I believe. Okay, so phase one, this is what we have. This is my budget year, what I've been allotted, the two hundred thousand approximate. With everything else, I had to bring this up too. I'm locked into a sixty-day pricing, and I'm thirty days into that pricing with asphalt right now. I started making hot mix asphalt or using it last year. It was sixty-two fifty a ton. I'm at eighty dollars a ton now. So, and I got, there is no warning when I get that phone call. The knife river guys were really nice and said, we'll lock you in for sixty days on this price. I went, okay, thank you. So soon as that ground temperature came up, we started making hay to get the roads prepped and ready. Pictures, or next time, I'll use a better color on the map. Sorry, that's my fault. This is what we're going to achieve with phase one. This is my, like I said, approximate budget as I sit right now. We have completed down in zone four, West Seventh, Johnson Drive, Lincoln. Tomorrow, we're actually finishing Rogers Street from Fifth to Seventh. Thursday, we're finishing Cleveland Street from Fifth to Seventh. And then we'll jump over to zone three. And then we'll jump over to zone three and do that area. And then probably jump up to zone one and then catch those other streets around town on this list. That we have identified those to be ones, these are all full rebuilds, these are ripped, you know, this is full base comes out of the ground. You know, full rebuild, these aren't overlays or just quick fixes. And I, I can, any questions or I can go through each one, we can go back, whatever preference you guys have.
Your schedule to complete this is the end of October.
With this, yes. If, and I do have, if I do the four phases, the way we're moving right now, I mean, like I just told you, I got two streets we're throwing down this week and those are both seven hundred and forty-foot long streets, that's two blocks.
When you say four phases?
The four sheets. Basically, I'm proposing if any additional funds come up, this is, if you, they're in two hundred thousand dollar blocks.
So phase is not a construction process?
No, 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 this is geography and zones. This is the worst of the worst streets we have right now for doing a full rehab. Full road reconstruction process.
That don't require too much utility work?
That do not require too much utility work, correct, sir?
We still got blocks that, you gotta get utilities done first that are in bad shape too.
Pierce being one of them, that's down in zone four. Uh, Water Utility Department's working on that. We know that's an open cut right now. I'm not gonna throw a brand new road on it. That is sitting down in zone four and that's why I said we may catch some of those other streets. There is no, I was, I've been here since September of twenty, so I worked with Paul, I helped him, he helped me learn the priority list and all that. I'm not turning priority, cause I don't want people to think that everything is listed as a priority. These are the priorities. This is the plan. Everything, you know, no, no street is worse than the next. These are the worst that we could, you know, we deemed the worst this year. The phase two, again, if additional funding comes available, I'm committed in our, us and our crew to be able to do this. This is another two hundred thousand dollar block. This would be getting Third Street, which, Third Street from Johnson to Taft, the junior high, recovered. There's enough good road structure there in that street. I'd probably have to talk to Walker and Partners to just make sure we get an engineer assessment on it for water drainage. But I think there's enough good road base, good road structure there that we could probably do a, just an overlay on that street. Put a new driving surface on that one specifically. Patricia Circle would probably more likely be a full rehab on that one. Because it has a big trench cut in it and everything else. So each street and, and a reason I don't have what it's gonna be right now, because everyone knows it rains, it gets hot, it gets cold, we get snow, whatever, these streets that could be overlays this year, or if I do get additional funding, this is the next year that we're looking at. This is twenty twenty-three. But if a road gets worse, it may turn into a full rehab or the costs go up of hot mix asphalt. So. Uh, Windsor, up by the cemetery, a lot of traffic out there. Jefferson, um, over by the railroad. Tenth Street, short blocks over there by the Jackson and the schools. We're trying to get the main thoroughfares north-south taken care of where there's a lot of traffic coming in in our neighborhoods. Third Street's a main thoroughfare east, you know, east-west. Fifth Street's gonna be probably up there pretty soon. Kind of ready to, there's phase, phase three, just the way it fell, everything kinda went north-south on this one. Again, Harrison is on this one over there between Sonic and West Second. And that's been chip sealed, covered. It's time, it's met its time limit. It's time to put a new asphalt structure on top of it, hot mix asphalt. Same thing for Tyler. And out there towards the baseball fields and stuff, uh, Taylor. Van Buren would be a full rebuild over there and then, uh, Jefferson in front of the exchange out towards, Third Street, from Third to Fifth. So I'm trying to catch those CO two thousand sixteen roads that have been, get them, get them ready for the next ten years, so we don't have to see or talk or, we can move on to, trying to catch up the oldest streets to the newest streets as fast as I can. Oh, excuse me, and West Windsor out there, that road is just atrocious, but there's not a huge traffic load on it, but it, we, I know it's bad. Anybody that's drove out there knows it's bad, but it doesn't matter, it's, it's bad, so it needs to be replaced. And then again, each one of these, if the money comes available, we can do it. Up in zone one, go the added Crockett Street, uh, zone two, uh, David Davis area. Put a, put a new top on that one. There's a lot of residential in there, a lot of traffic in there. Excuse me. And then, uh, Second Street down there in zone three, Jackson. And then, uh, Tenth Street from Johnson to Pierce. Kind of, that would probably be a multi-step process to get Tenth Street done, because it is so utilities in there and and it's just gonna be as tight with all the residences and displacing residents where they can park and everything else, so. Main thing is utilities under the ground, so. But that will connect into what we just do on Pierce after the new utilities, get done with, uh, Lot and His group from Water Department. Any questions on that? And again, these are two hundred thousand dollar blocks that I'm trying to get done for the city and the citizens.
So if the money, uh, Brian, were to, is available, can you do all that by October, those four phases?
If you give me a hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars, sir, today? Yes. Yeah, we are pumping, we're getting, and I was part of the presentation last year with Paul when we said it takes five to seven days, working days to get it done, factored it out. We may be short one of the long blocks, you know, one of the longer stretches, but I would focus on getting the main thoroughfares done. One of the, you know, tenth between, say, Johnson and Pierce, maybe get pushed to next year or something. But the third streets and the bigger streets and the main thoroughfares would be the priorities at that point. And we would adapt and make the plan change.
So, you don't have to get done by October first, but what's about your weather cutoff, about mid-November as a general rule?
Mid-November, we, we stretched it to December, sir. This last year, and it's, it's just really weather dependent on when the ground, when the ground says, I'm done at fifty, we're done. And I, my learning curve, a learning machine, I came from firefighting like Chad said, twenty years. Taught myself how to run that lay down machine in the back parking lot of Public Works with some crushed granite, read the books, went out there, figured it out. I'm an equipment guy, so it's, it's a dozer. I got four or five thousand hours on a dozer. I mean, so, I mean, it's similar, but it's not. But the base mechanics of it is the same, but first time we did it, I ran it and it was thirty-four degrees ambient temperature out there next to Tyler, next to the water. Car wash, because that road was just getting that bad. And we learned our lesson about going too cold on the ground temperature. Our little, our little roller had no roll. It just, it firmed up pretty quick, so we ended up having to go really super slow and the roller was right on me the whole time, so. We adapted and overcame, but we got a road down, but I'm, we're just, we learned a lesson not to do that again.
On these street projects, do we have any of these roads that we might have issues with water standing or drainage or, you know, just?
We do our due diligence, um, we have the surveying tools, um, I would love to take you guys out and I've, um, to like, we're, we're working right this week, sorry, Cleveland Rogers, we have the grade marks out there, we have the straight lines out there, we actually have the survey marks on the ground. Biggest challenge, our biggest things we learned, water doesn't lie. So when we do slush it, when we add the water to the road base, if the road base holds water in this section, we, we adjust it. We make sure that the road surface drains off good. After that rainstorm, um, last Tuesday, I believe it was, um, Rogers, we weren't totally ready, we thought, but Rogers actually drained all the water off. We hadn't even burnt off the final grade of it, but we had the grade matched, everything. Uh, we had some puddling on the sides, but we have no curb and gutter over there, so it's running off into open lots. But it will not be on the road structure. So, we're doing our due diligence to make sure that the roads do drain, the crown is there, it's not too high of a crown. The guys have really, I mean, I run the machine, but the guys underneath or beside me checking the, with the sticks to see how thick we are. I mean, that's the guys that are making my job easy.
Seventh Street looked real good after the rain the other day. I went and looked at it, as clean as it could be.
Yeah, so. I think, uh, Harrison, uh, by the coffee shop, it's draining really well. It's not eroding out, but it's draining like we wanted it to. It doesn't heat the edges out. So we're, we're, we're doing really good, I think. Thus far.
Yeah, I think the asphalt on Harrison and what is that, Tyler and Third, like, I think it looks great.
We just, it, my fear is someday when it does get, we'll get through the summer and I'll see how it does. That's my biggest fear. It was really cold when we did it that day and I just, after learning that, cause everything for me has been, it's been a learning curve, just like when I started firefighting, it's, you do, you're hired as firefighter, you're a firefighter, you're supposed to know everything. I don't know. So, every day's a new learning adventure, something I can learn every day. So, uh, cost comparisons, this is, I know this is a, was it cost kind of question. Local city in the area I had a conversation with lately, um, hasn't been paying contracted price at a hundred and eighty thousand per short block, which is three hundred foot length. The price goes up based on length from there. Just a comparison right now, that'd be just one of the phases I proposed to you, or not proposed, but showed you guys, and I am proposing what could be two hundred thousand dollars done by the street department guys right now. So.
Yeah, I'll tell you, I'm working in the city government, just one of these streets right here. That's what would cost, about two hundred thousand, just one of, if you're looking at phase four, I mean, a little one right here, that's just a couple of blocks. I had contracted out. Now, we ended up realizing in a meeting here recently, we did have drainage issues, so that bumped it up to half a million dollars now, so. Wonderful. This is, I mean, if we can do it and we can make it great for this price.
Yeah.
It's wonderful.
And, uh, again, uh, talking with, like, when I was talking to the citizen, um, Sherri Shadon the other day, more people we can get committed to help, you know, go on curb or gutter or adjusting curbs and gutters as we build them, fixing them. It makes the lay down process so much easier. You know, Eighth Street, that little short block we did, uh, between, um, the highway, uh, three seventeen and, uh, Jefferson, we have curb and gutter down both sides. That street falls, I think, I think it falls eight feet just in that little section there and from top to bottom. But the curb and gutter hold the water and it shoots it out like it's supposed to, drains into the highway. It goes down the highway like it's supposed to, so. I believe that's about it. That's it for me. Any questions?
I think you're probably answering them as you're going. It's been a, uh, pleasure to meet you and we appreciate your good work.
Yes, yes, sir.
You and the crew, all under your guidance, we really do. We're looking forward to, uh, in fact, we can see what's going on as we drive the streets.
Yeah.
And I know a big part of your success is based on, um, how much money we can put in the pocket to, to go do what you need to do, so.
Yes, sir. I wanted to paint a realistic picture of what, what we have ahead of us and what, you know, I had a meeting with the local official and it was like, you're paying that much? And it kinda just made sense to put that in for you in comparison.
That's good information.
It is.
So you guys have spent the money in past about equipment and then stuff like that and we'll probably ask you for more equipment and there's a, you know, spending a little bit here versus, you know, get us that much farther along with the money stretching as far as we can.
Okay, stay at it.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it.
Thanks for your support.
Thank you.
And we just ask for patience. Uh, I wanted to add one last thing. We have asphalt days, we refer to it, that's tomorrow. We're gonna be putting down, uh, Rogers. But, uh, typical asphalt day for us is just about all hands on deck, which, you know, when we're full, we're about twenty-one employees. And it usually takes thirteen to sixteen, somewhere around, because we have guys on the machine, beside the machine, driving dump trucks back and forth to pick up the hot mix, so that's, that's an all-day deal for, for these guys and, and that, he's, he's on the machine the whole day and it's a hot, it's a hot one, so. It's, it's a tough day, but he does great with what he's doing. Uh, I'd invite you guys to come hang with us during asphalt day if you want to, just to see the process, yeah. So, uh, call me, uh, I don't, I like personal, human interactions, so just call me if you wanna visit about something and, share concerns or whatever, just let us know.
Do we get our hot mix from the Knife River here or are we going to Waco and getting it?
We're, we're kinda pushing them, but so far, no. We're, we're, we're working on that.
We have to get it off the loop in, uh, Waco. It's an hour and a half turn each for each truck. So we're running five, six trucks tomorrow possibly, plus each six trucks, uh, that's sixty tons, so they're doing about three loads, them just three turns themselves.
Yeah, I remember when Paul was here, he told me Waco, but I, I noticed we had one here, that's why I was, I was just asking.
And I, I give, uh, his name's Johnny Badgett, he's, uh, our local sales rep. I give him plenty of, uh, every time I call him to order, I'm like, it'd be nice if it was a lot closer. About every, I'll have a phone call. I'm sure he's sick of hearing that from me, but.
Yeah, keep working on him.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, to item six, Kevin, announcements from the city manager.
I have nothing, sir.
Alright, uh, it takes us to, uh, seven, requests, comments from the mayor and council members. Anybody got anything? Hearing nothing, then, uh, under item eight, this meeting's adjourned just after eight o'clock. Thanks, everybody.